I know it. It's crazy.
Question number one. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order.
Maybe.
As we recited the pledge before the organizational meeting, we will forego that for the regular meeting. All members are present. And first on the agenda is the open forum. This is a 15-minute period of time set aside for citizen input, and we have one speaker for the evening, Lauren Harding, who want to come up? And here are three minutes.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Lauren, and I'm a parent of the district, and I am a resident of Prior Lake. As we gather tonight at the start of this new school board term, I want to begin by acknowledging the responsibility and trust that comes with your role. You have been chosen by members of the community to serve and represent the families, the students, and the Prior Lake School District as a whole, not just to govern, but to represent our collective voice. We are all here tonight to reaffirm our commitment to our students, our teachers, and our schools. Your role is not to represent outside influences and agendas, but to advocate for what is best for all children in our district. Every decision you make shapes their education, their opportunities, and ultimately, their futures. We believe that this community and we believe in this community and the strength it holds when we all come together. That is why we will continue to show up, not to criticize, but to ensure that our collective voice is heard and to support our students, our teachers, and our schools. We are here because we care deeply about the success of all children in this district, and we trust you to prioritize their needs above all else. Thank you so much for the service that you guys do, and we look forward to working alongside you to build a stronger and a more united future for the Prior Lake School District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So made.
By Director Franz. Second?
Second.
By Director Bullion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes our financials, purchase orders above $25,000, the monthly financial report, enrollment report, approval of the school board minutes from December 9th, personnel items, candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals, district retirements, and leaves of absence. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
So made.
By Director Atkinson. Second by Director Franz. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. So I'll read the resolution, and this will require a roll call vote. Whereas, Minnesota Statutes 123B.02 subdivision 6 provides the board may receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any proper use, any proper purpose, I'm sorry, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district, or for the benefit of pupils thereof, including trusts created to provide pupils of the district with advanced education after completion of high school in the advancement of education. And whereas Minnesota Statutes 465.03 provides, any city, county, school district of town may accept a grant or devise a real or personal property and maintain such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize such acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full. And whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, District 719, gratefully accepts the following donations as identified below. $16,850 for furniture for Glendale Elementary by Sean Graywood. $13,000 for two years of the Minnesota Cyber Summit from Mary France. $3,000 representing one-half of board stipend by Mary France, and $6,000 represented by her board stipend by Jessica Olstead. So I will entertain. Do I take a motion to this?
You do. Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the gifts as presented.
So made.
By Director Franz. Second? I'm sorry, Director Atkinson?
It's okay.
Second?
Second.
By Director Mason. And this does require a roll call. Director Olstad?
Yes. Aye.
Director Johnson?
Aye.
Director Franz? Oh, she said it again. Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Franz?
Aye.
And Director Mason?
Aye.
And aye? That motion carries seven zero. I'll learn your names eventually. Next on the agenda is Liquor Pride. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you Chair White. Just a couple of things I want to share tonight. The last time actually that we were meeting, I believe it was our December meeting, we had a middle school concert that was happening at the high school that night. And I think I've briefed the board and our community about this, but at that choir event, we had a medical emergency in the audience that evening. And there were numerous medical staff, first responders, some school staff that were there, and it was because of the efforts of some of the folks that were right there at the concert that literally saved a life that night. And we oftentimes talk about emergency preparedness in our district. It's something that our students go through quite frequently with various drills. Our staff go through it. There's mandatory trainings that we all go through. We have AED machines that are in all of our facilities through partnerships that we have with community agencies. And we go through these trainings hoping that we never have to institute the types of measures that we are trained to engage in. But that night, by the saving of that life, we know that this is exactly why we go through these drills and these emergency preparedness situations. And I just want to share that Anna Brinson, who is here this evening, I would like to have Anna come forward because I know that this was the family that was impacted by this. And then I would like to recognize just a couple of staff through their efforts that literally saved the life within her family. If you want to come forward, Anna, and share a few words?
This is my mom, Debbie. So this was her mom.
It was my mom.
So.
That passed.
I'm going to let her read.
I'm just going to read very quickly something that I wrote for the people that responded because they asked quite frequently about what's going on. They've supported Anna in a great deal, as has the district. The teachers that my three grandchildren go to have been extremely supportive in helping them manage that. My oldest grandson actually visually saw the accident or incident. My other two smaller ones did not, but their teachers have been fabulous in supporting them emotionally as we've been busy with my mom. So I'm just going to read this very quickly. It'll give you an idea of how I feel about the people that responded and actually the whole community as a whole. It says, "On behalf of Madeline Moe and the entire Moe Field family, please accept our sincere gratitude," I might not be able to get through this, "for your immediate and professional care of our mother, Madeline. It is because of your knowledge and willingness to get involved in Mom's medical emergency that she is alive today. Mom received immediate chest compressions by a retired firefighter who remains anonymous."
And some people.
And some other people too that were there helping. One of them is being recognized this evening. So she, the chest compressions and the AED, which you mentioned earlier, was actually the lifesaver, and shocks so that her brain received the oxygen that she needed. Due to your firsthand knowledge, Mom did not suffer any memory loss. Thank you for supporting her till the EMTs and the police and the fire department. She went no longer than 12 minutes without having somebody there. So that's a testament to them as well. Thank you so much for also following up with my daughter Anna to help her find and reach out to those involved to express our thanks and gratitude. This is how my mom's doing right now. Mom was given at best a 15, she's 92 years old. Mom was given at best a 15 chance of surviving this incident. In the month and a half since Mom's cardiac arrest, she has met and surpassed the following milestones: surviving chest compressions, both human and Lucas device, two AED shocks, being intubated, waking up while on the ventilator, which is one thing that they don't often do. She knew who we were. She's breathing on her own now without the ventilator. She survived six broken ribs and sternum. She did not end up with pneumonia, which is what they said was the biggest threat to her. She received two stents in her heart to alleviate 90% blockages, which I have since learned is very unusual for them to even do that on a 92-year-old. And Health Medical Heart Clinic, highly recommend it. She's since moved to the Masonic Transitional Care Unit for three weeks where she's received daily OT and PT for strength training and daily functions for behaviors when she returns home. She'll be dismissed from the transnational care to our home for about a week and a half to recuperate and follow up with several doctor's appointments. I will fly her home to her assisted living apartment at the end of January. This is all because of your swift actions and Mom's tough attitude to be appreciative of the time that she's been given. We are profoundly grateful for your swift actions, knowledge, and caring attitude as you helped our mothers, as you saved our mother's life. She doesn't remember what happened to her and who was involved, but she asked me to express her gratitude for saving her life and the thoughts and prayers for that followed. Again, we thank you from the bottom of hearts for the gift of life that you have given. We call her our Christmas miracle, Christmas miracle. We are firm believers in the power of prayer and definitely have felt the presence both within the district and with friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Want to thank you all for sharing a few words on behalf of your mom and letting us know how she's doing. I would like to also call up Rachel Libanow and Heidi Burton. And I believe I heard Officer Kelch is in the, oh, I didn't see. Okay, Officer Kelch, you're here tonight. And we also have Nicole T., who is not able to attend, but I know she is watching online, so thank you to you as well. And then we also have a retired firefighter who was very instrumental that night, who wished to remain anonymous. And I'm sure there were countless others as we heard, but these are just some of the names that were brought forward. And again, just a big thank you to folks for your lifesaving measures on behalf of folks in our community. So if you want to come up, I have two certificates for Rachel and Heidi. And Officer Kelch, I don't know if you wanted to say anything at all.
I just wanted to be up here with you, just to show collaboration. I know all of the police officers there that were present that night, you left an impression upon them. And hopefully, you know, we're reaching out to do a similar lifesaving award at our city council meeting on February 3rd. So we couldn't say thank you enough as well. So.
And it just speaks to the volume of our partnership, you know, with police and fire departments. We do a lot of joint emergency training and responsive preparedness training together. Very significant for us this year, and you all have been very instrumental in helping keeping our school community safe, not only during the school day, but clearly, you know, in the evenings as well. So thank you and to the whole team that was there that night. Rachel and Heidi, are you all here tonight? Come on forward.
And Dr. Thomas, also, I think it's important to recognize, Heidi, are you a 2019 graduate or 2020 graduate?
2018.
2018, okay. Graduate of Prior Lake, so thank you.
Okay. Move on to my second here. All right. So the next one I want to call forward is Justin Schram, who is our Prior Lake High School Band Director. And you've all heard our bands, I'm sure. I'm a little biased, but they are an amazing group of students who produce just amazing pieces of music under the leadership of Justin. And when I learned that they were going to be going to a very prestigious international music clinic, the 78th Annual Midwest Music Clinic, I think it was, Band and Orchestra Conference in Chicago, and they were invited to perform with a renowned composer and instructor as well, one of their pieces, one of his pieces. And it was my honor to travel down there to observe our students really wowing a packed hall of individuals. And Justin, I can't thank you enough for your amazing leadership. I know you were recognized that day as well. I'll let you talk a little bit about that. But just want to thank you and all the staff that were there. I know you've had your colleagues from different districts supporting this initiative with our kids. And I know that you had a little travel setback on your way back as well, where you had a bus that wouldn't start, but you made it back, you know, and kids got to sleep in the next morning. But, you know, it was well worth it, I'm sure. So congratulations to you and your students. And I do have a certificate for you, and I'll let you share a little bit about what happened that day. And I know I posted about it, but thank you.
First of all, thank you. Good evening and for inviting me to reflect and share more on the percussion ensemble's performance at the Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference. I think for many people that don't have background knowledge of the conference, the magnitude of what these students have accomplished is hard to kind of comprehend. We understand when a team wins a state tournament or a conference tournament because we all tend to have a sports background or we have a community background. But really, what does it mean for our students to be invited to this international clinic in Chicago that happens every year? And so thank you for letting me share a little bit more about the process that this took for the 14, or sorry, for the 11 years since 2014 that this ensemble has been established and what they accomplished in those 11 years. And thank you for joining us, Dr. Thomas. I think having you there was great support for the students, and it was great to see you and be there and see firsthand what these students have really been able to do. So I'll make this brief, but share some information. So, the vision statement of the Midwest Clinic International Band Orchestra Conference states, "To be the premier global gathering for instrumental music educators, musicians, and industry professionals to gain knowledge, skills, and relationships that resonate across the cultures and generations. For 78 years, instrumental educators, musicians, and industry professionals have gathered in Chicago to grow and connect as a profession. Yearly, over 18,000 individuals are in attendance. The conference has a combination of concerts and professional development sessions. This year, there are musical groups from 17 different states and four different countries, including Lithuania, Spain, and Japan. Yearly, one of the military bands is featured as an evening concert performer as well." The process to be invited to perform requires three letters of recommendations from leaders in our field, two audio recordings of differing styles, two video recordings of the same works, and three programs from the previous years to show consistency in quality of works performed. This is not just a one-year thing. It is showing your program over time. And so to see some former students like Heidi, who has been part of the program as well, goes all the way back to our students back from when we started in 2014. Additionally, the application process includes biographical information on the district, the school, the instrumental music program, and the director. The Midwest Clinic Board of Directors and Selection Committee analyzes the applications and invites that year's performing ensemble. Our invitation to perform marked the first Minnesota school to be invited since 2001, the first Minnesota high school since 1977, and the first percussion ensemble from the state of Minnesota. The magnitude of this invitation and what the students accomplished is what spurred me to apply for the proclamation from the state of Minnesota. So I went on their website and filled out that form. And because of how big of a deal and how special of this was, December 18, 2024, was named Prior Lake High School Percussion Ensemble Day in the state of Minnesota. Putting together the performance for the conference was no small step, many, many hours, many, many hours. Requirements of length, difficulty of pieces, publisher of pieces, and the variety of songs all had to be taken into consideration before the conference approves your performance program. Our program was titled "To Live." The goal was to connect how music tells the story of our lived experiences. We featured two world premieres and works for a large percussion ensemble, two pieces designed to be played in nature by a triangle quartet under a starry sky. One common aspect of the conference performances is to have guest artists perform with your ensemble. I reached out to Michael Burrit from the Eastman School of Music to see if he would be interested, and he graciously said yes. The Eastman School of Music is arguably one of the most, one of the premier music schools in our nation, and Michael Burrit is something else. The Eastman Percussion Ensemble also performed that Friday, made a group that was lights out. It was unbelievable. Michael Burrit is one of the premier percussionists and teachers in the world. To put it a little differently, basketball players have their shoes. He has his own mallets, and not just his own mallets, he has his own marimba that is his mallet tech, MJB, that is named and was made specifically for him. And so to have him onstage, working with our students, and he was so gracious and kind and encouraging them. And when he wanted, he knew they could do something else, he encouraged them to play more. In the middle of our performance, he composed the piece that we played called "White Pines," which is about being home in his state of upstate New York. And he was seven minutes in, and his top mallet snapped right in half. We play with his line of mallets on our marimbas, but nobody was on marimba. He's like, "Somebody grab me a mallet." And he ran over and all, we kind of had a little like, "What do we do? We just broke a mallet." He ran to his seat, jumped over the microphone stand, grabbed new mallets, and just started back in. And the students caught back in right where he was to finish the last three minutes of the piece. It was fantastic. It was pure gold. And having our students work with him was a dream for mine, having looked up for him for years. The students performed like never before at the conference. It really was something special. They showed the entire instrumental music education world that they have something special to share through their music. While I'm extremely proud of how they performed, it was who they were as individuals that truly, truly makes me, as a teacher, smile. The comments I got after the performance that came from professionals from around the country were about the students, their composure, their maturity, and their focus. As one of the board members of the conference stated in an email to me, unsolicited, "It is easy to become utilitarian," for lack of a better word, "with the hosting of various groups. We know everyone is going to play well. We know the audience will be impressed. But I was particularly taken with the students and their deportment. It was so professional and mature. That doesn't just happen, but it's a reflection of some first-class mentoring from wonderful mentors. Good music? Absolutely. The people part can come and go, but the kindness of the group was particularly convincing. The personality certainly made a positive impression on me. I'm not sure a better compliment could be offered." So thank you to them, and thank you to you for giving me the opportunity to share with you tonight the amazing experience that we were able to have in our band program here in the district.
Yes, that mallet faux pas was quite fun to watch, how the kids were, he was prepping the kids for everything for them to be coached, but little did we know, it was going to be the world-renowned composer who would need a little coaching and figure out what to do at the last minute. But very well done. Very well done. And I also met one of our other former grads, who is a University of San Francisco music teacher, I think. Yep, so he was there. And I think another St. Thomas professor who was there as well. Of all the hundreds I was standing with, I stand next to two Minnesotans. It was great. Yeah.
That's great.
One last one. I would like to share with, I know that right before the winter break, we shared with you that our business office, under the leadership of Tammy Frederickson, submitted for the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. And this was an award, this is an award that's renowned within the finance industry internationally. It is an award that we applied for back in 2017 and did not receive. And this year, we did apply for it, and we did get recognition and awarded the very prestigious Meritorious Budget Award for fiscal year 2425. There's a lot that goes into this. And I know those of you who saw the budget book, a lot of it is the discussions that we have here. So one would say, well, what's the ceremonial fact of this? Well, there's a significant aspect of understanding school finance and breaking it down in ways that are very digestible, in ways that our general public and community can access. It's something that we've done since my first year here of an online, real-time dashboard, as well as now getting recognition internationally as well. I'm going to leave it to Tammy to come forward and just share a few more words about the importance and other effects of having such an award under our belt and how this actually helps the districts in the long run on a variety of factors. And then, of course, you and your team can come forward for a presentation of the plaque and a picture, please.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. This is, as Dr. Thomas said, kind of the industry standard for school business officials. The Association of School Business Officials International, we're also members of the Minnesota Association of School Business Officials. We decided to apply for this award. My team is here, three of my team is here, that were very instrumental in helping put this document together. We do a budget document every year. It's on our department website. You can look up our budget book every year. But this was a little bit different because when you apply for this award, there is a 10-page checklist document of everything that you have to include in your budget in order to get this award. They have a panel that judges it. It is, one of the things that we have tried since I've been here, since Dr. Thomas has been here, to be very transparent about what our budget looks like, what goes into our budget. And we certainly tried to do that on this one. It helps with our bond ratings. When we go out and sell bonds, they're going to look at what kind of awards has this district received. You'll see, if you come to the business office on one wall, we have 14 years of certificates for Excellent in Financial Reporting, who also comes from the Association of School Business Officials. We get the Minnesota Department of Education's Award for Financial Accuracy every year for as long as I can remember. It certainly, we also have a clean audit. So when we go out for any bond sales, the rating agencies are going to look at those things. So it's going to help get us a better bond rating and just give all the information that we put everything out there that we could in this document. There is a fee to submit it, which is not unusual in a business award program. This sponsor does not, this isn't what they do all the time. So they do charge a fee, as they do for the other Certificate of Excellence in Reporting Award. We've printed the documents for you this year. As we print the audit reports, just is easier to have something, a hard copy for you to look at. You can certainly look at it online, but we thought for this first kind of presentation that we would print the documents for all of the board. We've been talking about this, my team, we talked about last year when we started putting together our budget document, that why can't we put together a little more information, make it a little more make it a little more robust, and let's try to get this award? So we're extremely pleased. We're very proud of the work that we did, and we thank you for acknowledging that we did receive this award.
Do you want to have members of the team come forward?
We have Jess and Beth and Andrea here tonight.
And reads, "The Meritorious Budget Award is presented to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools for exceptional quality in school by the presentation fiscal year 2425. We get the bright spots for future successes for all the board."
Congrats.
Thank you all for all the work you've put into that.
And Justin snuck out without his picture, so I'll have to get him on a different time. And Chair White, that is all the updates for tonight.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Next on the agenda are personnel items. We have an additional budget, additional support staffing request. Director Herman.
Excuse me.
Chair White, members of the board, tonight we're bringing forward additional staffing request from the Community Services Fund, the O4 Fund, a request to add a .8 FTE. I think in the agenda, it's .08, but it should be .8 FTE, which is, in the memo, it has the accurate, FTE and the costing is the same. It's the $70,050 per year. This request is coming from Community Education in order to help all students that are participating in Kids Co. that have additional needs per their IEP or 504 plans, to coordinate those plans to ensure those students' success and reducing any burdens or barriers for them to participate.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept this additional staffing request.
So made.
By Director Bullion, second by Director France. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries a 7-0. The 2024 State of Minnesota Pay Equity Report, Director Herman.
Chair White, members, Chair White, members of the board, we're presenting to you the Pay Equity Report. This is a report that is required every three years. We have finalized it for 2024 and submitted it within compliance.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So made.
By Director Johnson, second.
Second.
By Director Olstead. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries a 7-0. We have no unfinished business, so under new business, we do have an annual resolution. I will read the resolution and then entertain a motion for approval. This resolution is directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial condition of the school district and a reduction in student course enrollment dictates that the school board must reduce expenditures immediately, and whereas this reduction in expenditure must include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs. And whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on an unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 719 as follows, that the board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or curtailment of positions as per board fund balance, fund balance policy. So I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
By Director Olstead. All in favor signify by saying aye.
We have discussion, please.
Thank you.
And it is a roll call vote, my bad. Any discussion?
Thank you. Yes, I have a question. So for the past two years, I look back, and we approved this in February, both years. One year we are investing, the second year, last year, we were making reductions. So maybe I have a two-part question. One, why the change to moving it up a month versus doing it in February like we've done in the past? And secondly, this, does this memo, I'm assuming, is for the '25-'26 school year? Or is it, does it impact immediately changes to the budget currently?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, to answer the last question first, it's for the next fiscal year for the '25-'26. Sorry, I don't remember the exact order of the questions, but it is, we're presenting to here today because we're continuously trying to move forward any of the procedural processes with the budget ahead so that we can have more time when looking forward, looking forward to the next board meetings. This is the procedural memo that starts first. Any recommendations for reductions in staffing or FTE will come, come at a later date. This is the procedural memo that allows us to move forward in that direction. I believe I answered all the questions.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, my understanding is by moving it up, it's going to allow us, we're starting the process, and it will allow us more time to discuss the budget changes for the '25-'26 school year. Is that correct?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, that is, our hope is to provide, provide more opportunities at future board meetings to have further discussions and ultimately either maintain our, our staffing timelines or move them up so that staff that are impacted have a, have additional timelines when, when seeking the impact of those positions.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? This does require a roll call vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So made.
By Director France, second.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. I'll start with you, Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye, that motion carries 7-0. Next on the agenda is a budget update, Director Frederickson.
Thank you, Chair White, members of the board. I just want to share a few highlights from our monthly financial report that you saw on the consent agenda. It is, as you all are aware, we're always a month behind because we have to get the bank recs and final payroll. So this is a November report that you have this month. It does reflect the updated revised budgets for Fund 1 and Fund 4. The, all of the COVID money, which is federal dollars, is now complete there. It had to have been spent by September 30th. We got everything spent. There was a couple things that are, we were unable to spend all of around some summer programming that we were not quite able to spend at all, so we gave, I believe it was like $6,000 back that we weren't unable to spend. The unassigned fund balance is right at 10.86%. The total fund balance is, if you take the, all of the general fund for unassigned, assigned, non-spendable, restricted, we're at 12.37, which is at the high end of what our board policy is. We have not received any title dollars yet, that's federal dollars. There has been some issues around reporting in the MDE serves report, so we haven't gotten some of that revenue yet. We anticipate that it will be fixed in the next couple months. The, if you look at the year-to-date spend, we're right in line with what we've spent for the last couple years, with the exception of federal sources. Again, that's mostly related to COVID. Last year, our federal budget was about $3.9 million. This year, it's 1.8. Again, there are no more COVID dollars. So last year, at this time, we were making plans to spend all of that additional COVID money, and it hadn't all gone through because most of it was for summer. So you'll see later in the year that the year-to-date comparisons, as we move forward through this year, is going to be more comparable just because of those COVID dollars getting spent. Our PMA balance right now is higher than it usually is. You can see that we're about $49 million, but at the end of January, we have our principal and interest for all of our bonds due. So after we make that payment at the end of this month, then our PMA investment account will drop back down. Other than that, unless there's other questions about the monthly financials, the enrollment numbers, we're looking at for '25-'26, and we haven't gotten all of the kindergarten numbers, but where we're sitting right now, as of this morning, about 350 students. And if we compare that to the last several years, at the same point in time, last year we were at 332, the year before 386, the year before 358. So we're right within that range of what we've been seeing. I don't think we'll see the same as we did the '23-'24, but we're at least right within the range of what we have been. So hopefully, the next few months, we'll see many more kindergarten students to get up to our usual of around 500, 550. But we are at 350 right now. So that is all of the updates I have currently. We'll be presenting at the next study session much more detail on the '25-'26 budget.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
Yes. Director Frederickson, can you clarify? Did you say we're spending the same amount as what we have been spending when we had the COVID dollars?
No, it's the same, if you look at the percentage in the financial report, the percentage that we compare year-to-date, the federal dollars, last year, year-to-date, we were about 4% spent of our total budget, but the budget was also 3.8 million. We're at about 19% spend, but our budget is 1.8. But we also have spent all of our COVID dollars.
Got it.
I also would just like to mention, if you look at our financial statement or our financial report from last year, from our auditors, I think there was a comment made earlier that we were a negative, we overspent our budget by $7 million. That, in fact, is not correct. We overspent the budget by about 4.3, and 1.4 of that was authorized by the board. So the grand, kind of, aside from what the board approved, was a little less than $3 million that we had overspent. And as we discussed at the time that we did the audit, that was mostly in special education and transportation.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Director, sorry, one more question. Director Frederickson, the, the title money that you said we haven't received yet, what kind of categories would that be coming in that we're not getting, and why?
So the title money, we get Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So Title II is professional development, can only be spent for professional development. Title I is based on Students Free and Reduced Lunch, so it's for students in poverty. Title III is ELL. We haven't, there's been issues around, we have to enter the budgets into the MDE serves report, and then every month, you report your expenditures, but you can't report your expenditures until they approve the budget officially in the serves, and they haven't done that yet. So we haven't been able to enter our expenses because there's no budget to apply it to. And MDE knows that. We've been working with them, and they're, they're working on the issue, and hopefully we'll get it resolved shortly so we can get those expenses in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, a proclamation in regards to Minnesota Para Educators Appreciation Week, and we have a proclamation. And if Director Atkinson would mind reading that, he would appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes January 27th to January 31st, 2025, as Para Educators Appreciation Week. Our paraeducators are vital to our district's mission and our students' success. This week, we express our heartfelt thanks and gratitude for their dedication. Whereas we recognize they collaborate with teachers to provide care, support, and a high-quality education, our paraeducators contribute to instructional support and individual student assistance that foster educational success. And whereas the support and services provided by paraeducators are essential to student achievement, enhancing the effectiveness of our schools, and whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraeducators play in ensuring educational success, and whereas Governor Tim Walz has proclaimed the week of January 27th through the 31st, 2025, as Para Educator Recognition Week in Minnesota. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education extends its appreciation and encourages the entire PLSAS community to join us in expressing personal thanks to our paraeducators for their unwavering dedication and commitment to our students.
Thank you for reading that, Director Atkinson, Chair White, and board. I want, I'm here because the bulk of our paras, our special education paras, but I don't want to not include the rest of our paras. So I just, you know, we have ECFE, parent assistance, we have lunchroom supervisors, media support, we have a cute language transliterator, and then there's a few more on here too. But so I just, I'm going to express appreciation for all of them, even though it'll come off with a little bit of a special education twist. So our special ed paras work tirelessly with our students and sometimes spend more time with them than even our teachers do. So I want to thank them for all the work that they do. Sometimes it probably appears as a thankless job, but we truly could not do the work that we do without them, whether that's in the special education classroom, or in the lunchroom, or in early childhood. So thank you for recognizing them, and we'll be celebrating them the week of the 27th. So if you're around and you see a para, thank a para. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, no policy to discuss tonight, so that moves us to administrative reports. Superintendent Report, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White. Just a few things to touch bases on. We have our annual town hall that we typically do right around January, coming up on January 29th, that's Wednesday. That's the same week as our board study session, so we timed it, kind of reflect back and report out. It'll be at Prior Lake High School in the old lecture hall just next to the main office area at 6:00 PM. Also, just want to share that coming soon, we are developing a new initiative to start recognizing and connecting work directly to our strategic priorities, and Dr. Zumbush is developing a method to highlight district successes and priority driven efforts. It'll allow us to also start to share practices from one building to another and really build this warehouse of promising practice from instructional aspects and special ed support aspects, you know, you name it, we'll be building that up. Also, developing connections between staff from one building to a next and being able to replicate success over time. And so we're looking forward to that. We'll be releasing that shortly. Just a quick update on branding. With our new strategic plan, part of our efforts was to go through and start being more on-brand, and that includes updating signage throughout the district. And so there will be some signs that we have that will be coming down while we're putting up new signs reflecting our strategic plan, both the actual plan itself, as well as some of the learner profile aspects, and really focusing on the attributes that we're looking for versus what we don't want to see. We've had lots of conversations with our administrators, particularly those that are steeped in Positive Behavioral Intervention Support, or PBAIS, and you always lead and model with what you expect versus telling students not to do something. So as an organization, we're leaning into that as well. And so there will be a transition of removing of signs and then resurrecting the new ones that are aligning to our new strat plan. And that will be starting, we're getting our final bids on printing productions and sizes and all that, so be looking forward for that. And then we kicked off our legislative convening with AMSD last Friday. It was a packed house in St. Paul where superintendents It was a packed house in St. Paul where superintendents and many elected officials convened to have a preliminary showcase of the AMSD Legislative Platform, which is the Association of Metro School Districts. You all have probably seen your MSBA one, it's literally the same. So, and that is the dominant, that is the dominant platform that's coming out. We'll be sharing an updated version of our platform next study session that will be put into packets for you also when you have your day at the capitals, or day at the Capitol, you'll have your packets that you can bring forth and also distribute and speak to that as well, so we'll walk through that at the end of this month. But I was also joining Cory, Superintendent from Anoka, as well as Renee from St. Anthony New Brighton, to contextualize what do these aspects of the AMSD platform look like, like in the field, in practice? So you have all these policies floating around and all this jargon, but what does this mean at the end of the day for kids? What does this mean at the end of the day for budgets, et cetera? So it was a very, very pointed discussion that we had with a variety of our elected officials, and then we also had a legislative panel that we listened to, and folks, it's going to be, it's going to be dicey. I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of money to go around, and you're all probably seeing the same news lines that I'm seeing, there's already tensions, you know, between parties, et cetera. So it's going to be an interesting go, but we're committed to staying focused on what's best for our kids here in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, as well as our affiliate advocacy organizations, namely MSBA and AMSD that kind of dominate a lot of the conversation right now. I will also be going to DC as the chair-elect of the Federal Advocacy Committee at the end of March. There'll be a contingent of delegates that will go out there to better understand what's going to be happening at the federal level. You all know that there are going to be some changes with new administration and what will happen with regards to the Department of Education impacts, changes there as well. Title funding that we were just talking about, those are big conversations that we're having, and so be going out there to gather and learn more from our federal colleagues and then bringing that information back here to the state of Minnesota and specifically, you know, with you all, as me being the incoming chair for that advisory committee or advocacy committee. And then lastly, just a reminder of our MLK, our Annual MLK Celebration, January 20th, 10 to noon, it's open to the public, and this year we'll be having poetry competitions with our students. I don't know if you're going to be speaking to that, but there will be, our students will be speaking to that, and then they'll be recognizing I Have a Dream Poetry winners as well later on that afternoon. So looking forward to that, to hear some of our kids. And I don't believe any of our admin, oh, you do have one admin report, Chair White.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Members of the board, I just wanted to give an additional shout-out to our two retirees that we have on the agenda today. Jean, that has served over 16 years with us as a building administrative assistant, and then Bonnie, who served over 25 years as a sped para. I'm just wanting to give some extra attention and shout-out to those two amazing individuals that have dedicated many, many years of service to the district and community, so just wanted to give a quick shout-out. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You good?
Yep.
All right, we're down to board reports, and we'll start with Ann.
Thank you, Chair White, members of the board. I'm Ann, if I haven't met you before, I'm excited to work with all of you this year. In regards to the school right now, obviously, winter sports and activities are up and running. You've come to our basketball games and hockey games, I'm sure, but everything's going well. I just want to speak on the mural project that our student advisory group is currently working on. It's where we're creating a mural that paints a picture of a diverse and unified student body to go along with a lot of the things that we've been working on as a school and a district, and we got all of our affinity groups involved, and we want to make sure that every background and culture that exists at our school is represented. So we're having a meeting this Wednesday to continue talking about like the actual mural and what we want to see on the wall. And as Superintendent Thomas has, Dr. Thomas has talked about, we do have MLK Day celebration. I think you touched on everything perfectly, so I hope to see all of you there. And then in regards to student council, right now we are in the midst of planning our winter dance. This year, we're doing a snowball instead of a sweetheart stance, and we're really trying to increase the school spirit in the time prior to the actual week so that everyone is energized and excited when the events come. I just want to highlight one of our events that week is going to be the Winter Carnival on that Thursday, February 13th. If any of you and your families would like to come, we'd love to join you. It is a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish Foundation, so it is a great cause to support. Thank you, that's all I have.
Ann, if there's any other board reports, we'll just work away around the table. Director Olstead?
Sure, thank you. My daughter and I had the great pleasure of going to the one-act plays this past weekend that our drama students put on at the high school. That was amazing, as always. I always leave those things with my mouth wide open at the talent of our kids, so thank you for a wonderful evening. Really appreciated my time on the Equity Advisory Committee as my, one of my last duties. The Coffee and Conversation is coming up January 23rd, next week, and this is going to be kind of a profile of all kinds of learners, all the different kinds of learners we have in our district. So we're going to have a panel discussion and some presentations. This is going to be at Westwood in the All Purpose Room, so I encourage everyone to attend if you can make it. As the board representative for Southwest Metro, the first meeting of the year will be next week, so apologies, you're getting some of this a month later. But the first wave of their international teachers are on board, they started teaching last week, and they're very excited about the cold. I disagreed wholeheartedly at that, but I'm really happy for them. They started last week. The culinary class, I think I mentioned this last week or last month, they're going to be featured in the student showcase at MSBA, the conference this week on Thursday, so check them out. They are also, we are looking at revising their strategic plan as well with the new superintendent aboard, and so they're looking at potentially doing that as well. Yeah, so that's what's going on at Southwest Metro, a lot of stuff. Thank you.
Nothing? Director Atkinson?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Amy?
The only thing that I'd like to say is to share my appreciation of the STRIVE program at Bridges ALC. I just appreciate that program so much, the community involvement, it's just been a real blessing to be part of, so that's, I just want to shout that out.
And Director France?
Excuse me, I would second what Director Bullion just said about, about the STRIVE program. They had their first meeting of the year, again, for the mentees and mentors. Last week, it was, it's always exciting and it's always heartwarming, plus the good that you can do with these kids and for your community is just immeasurable. I do have an update, a scale meeting was last Friday. In the scale meeting, Bell Plane, who passed their building levy last year, gave us updates on the construction progress and everything that they are doing in their elementary, middle, and high school, and the stages of that. The superintendent was very, very excited in her presentation, I'm sorry, in the other person's presentation on behalf of the superintendent. And then we had a panel discussion on the 2025 cannabis decisions, and the go-live of cannabis sales and the various potency levels, et cetera, and they had a panel discussion with county health representatives, the county attorney, and representatives from most of these cities within Scott County. So it was a very, very exciting and robust discussion, showing that each city is pretty much doing things polar opposite of each other.
All right. Okay, we have reached the end of the agenda. We have some future events. There's no school on the 20th in celebration of Martin Luther King Day. Dr. Thomas alluded to the event at the high school that morning. The Teacher of the Year Celebration at Hidden Oaks is also that day at 3:00. End of the second quarter for grades E12 is January 23rd, and we have no school on the 24th for a staff workday. And then note the next study session on the 27th at 6:00, and then as Dr. Thomas alluded to, the finance town hall on the 29th at 6:00. There's nothing else to come for the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
By Director France. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned.